Oh, we didn't start yet. Okay, Jackie, we're being hot soon. Anything that you say will be picked up by the maker.
Yep.
All right. I think we're bringing the school board meeting to order. But to start, salute to the five. What do we do? Okay, so thank you all for this and having a live meeting tonight. Board and welcome to the public who is live streaming. And Mrs. Chen with, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Dennis Clements. Mr. Cormac.
Here.
Mrs. Cullen.
Here.
Mrs. Dolan.
I'm here.
Mr. Gerhardt.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Dr. Thompson.
Here.
And Mrs. Walter.
Here.
And for purposes of transparency, we have Mrs. Dolan, Mr. Cormac, and Mr. Gerhardt to do a teleconference. And the rest of the board members present. Thank you very much. So at this time, we can move into public comment. I don't believe I need to read the comments. Yes, I will read it. Okay. According to policy 903, public comment, which is limited to two minutes, should be directed to the presiding order rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. The confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals, must be communicated directly to the school board. And superintendent via email at psgschoolboard@penrige.org. So thank you very much. My understanding, we have great comments for tonight. And Mrs. Chen, if you're going to read those, I believe.
First comment is from Adam Bensick from East Rock Hill Township. Community involvement is vital to a functioning school district, and I think the district and the board should do everything it can, make it easy as possible to stay connected. One thing that would be sent out an email in some school board meetings. With everything that is going on, I think it would benefit the community to have a notification of upcoming school board meetings as opposed to having to hunt down the calendar. I also think the new website looks great, but the past two meetings have not been updated on the calendar. Lastly, I would like to see the district have a plan to make sure our board meetings are live streamed even after we return to in-person meetings. Allow a lot of community members who are able to make it to the meeting, Jake Park. Thank you. The next comment is from Joshua Hogan, West Rock Hill Township. Thank you to the board members who voted in August. Move forward with in-person learning, including full five-day instruction at the elementary and intermediate levels. By following the signs, including the Bucks County Health Department's modified quarantine, you have saved many children from heartbreak and frustration being felt in most other Bucks County districts. As the weeks have gone on, you have proven more and more right. While other districts have deprived their students of access to a fair and equal education, you have given students and families choice. The freedom for each family to decide what educational model is best for their children is very valuable, and the entire Penn community is indebted to the board members who had the wisdom, humility, and prudence to do the right thing. In other words, in, excuse me, in the words of Alson Mandela, there can be no keener revelation of society's soul than the way which treats its children. The third public comment is from Kathy Bailey, Sellersville. On two occasions over the past 10 days and on March 13th, when Dr. Bolton had just schools, my children and I have personally witnessed large groups, 15 or more of Penn Central Middle School employees getting together at local pub down the street from school, all sitting shoulder to shoulder, drinking, sharing food, with zero masks, zero social distancing. These employees represent the entire Penn Central. Teachers from different grades, counselors, special education, personnel, coaches, and I believe even a school nurse was there on March 13. Everyone has the right to recreation, to eat and to drink with family and friends, but right now we are navigating frustrating and predictive rules in order to give our children a chance for education. Central employees selfishly starting those guidelines and efforts by stupidly and irresponsibly getting together in large groups and behaving this way, a local bar is disgusting. How arrogant and ungrateful to all the students, parents, and teachers who are obeying other rules so that schools can stay open. My children opted to attend PHS five full days a week and only allowed two. Whether we agree with that decision or the guidelines enforced, we have no choice but to obey them in order to give our children the only educational experience available. We are willing to do it, but likewise, expect the same from all of the PhDs. Students wear masks all day, face phone, and sit six feet apart during lunchtime, navigate insane world-class ways, zooming from home for lessons. Many of the classes they take will never be properly taught or experienced in this mode of learning. They will continue to test out concerts, prom, athletic competitions, music festivals, and more. A subpar educational experience, to say the least, that will no doubt have far-reaching negative effects. Supervising children at home three days a week when you should be working is a financial hardship for many. So to see a dozen plus employees in a local middle school rudely and selfishly convene at a pub on a regular basis, hypocritically casting all these guidelines to the wind while the rest of us jump through hoops to do whatever is required feels like a wild, destructive slap in the face. These same things will continue to receive a high percentage of their pay if schools are closed again. But hundreds of parents at home seeking online education can get zero compensation. These same Penn Central employees interact with close to 400 students each day, plus over 100 staff. To be hanging out at work completely disregarding social distance measures as they expect of their students and parents is outrageously hypocritical and dangerously destructive. If there was an outbreak of COVID-19 at Central, the contact tracing as a result of their recklessness would be enormous. Also, their choice here could be in large groups at this particular location is intensely insensitive to the small business. This pub is struggling to survive amid stringent regulations. They encourage social distancing and irresponsible behaviors in the main open. They don't need a potential scandal that involves a huge and public investigation by the CDC. I brought all this to the attention of the superintendent and the entire school board more than once. Not sure why they're doing nothing about it. Perhaps it's because they feel their behavior is absolutely fine. In that case, we should be able to reopen all schools a hundred and fifty-five days a week right away. Perhaps they feel we should all just shut up and do as they said, not as they do.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Kraus, may I?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to, the comment by Mr. Bensick for ordering the school board meetings and live stream. We are excited about the new website. That's one of the things I see some of those improvements in the calendar. You'll see, I actually have a snapshot. One of the pieces that is in gray, right in the, the homepage is an integrated calendar that families can show individual schools as well as within the district. And the district will be, so all school board meetings and committee meetings will be right on the page. I think there's a five-day look ahead in terms of the events in terms of coming, as well as the full calendar being on the school board page. In terms of live streaming, as you know, as we talk about the goals that are before you tonight, one of those has to do with increased live streaming. And so a huge thank you to Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Miller, and the whole tech department in terms of their work on live streaming. Just today, we livestreamed a field hockey match, a volleyball match, and a school board meeting. So two of those at the exact same time. So I hope people are watching the school board meeting and not volleyball at this moment, but they're both going on. And so it's just a huge thank you that we are committed to increasing live stream, especially when we're not able to have open participation for every event that we have. That will be able to give people access. So that, for Mr. Hohr, Miss Hohmann, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Let's go to roll out to your table, for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, as part of this superintendent's report, I obviously just wanted to celebrate being back to school. And so just put together a lot of some of the images and the things that we want to highlight. We came back to school and we welcomed almost 7,000 students on the first day of school, 3,897. So about 6,900 students on one. It always goes up and down, plus or minus on each day. We're about 6,900. Forty-five percent of them are back for a full five-day face-to-face instruction. Thirty-five percent of them are back in a hall. And 20% are hybrid. And 20% of them chose full remote for the house. And so we do have students in all three of those as they go through. We just have so many thank yous that I want to share tonight. Obviously, first of all, all the teachers and the support staff from the day-to-day, getting ready for the students, all the different models and wanted to build things, the changing and safety protocols, to the administration, to the transportation department, and nutritional services. Those needs have not stopped. Transportation and lunch might look different, but we continue to be able to meet those needs. Just a reminder to all families and anyone who's listening that thanks to the government, that there are free meals for all students. And so just to be able to take advantage of that, no matter what academic option you're in. I was able to help today with the government and some of the nutritional services to give out some meals today where the hybrid and remote campus can come every Monday from 11:00 to 1:00, regardless of their instructional model, has nothing to do with me. And so we were able to give out over 500 individuals today. I put, no, just under 500 individuals today, which is about 3,000 meals, because it's more than one meal per individual. So just a one, two, three, four, five. So hope this collage just shows you some of the excitement. I love this picture and also am a little sad for this picture because that little boy is really struggling with his supplies. And that teacher wants to help him, but he's trying to get to the front door. And so it's a neat symbol where mom's saying goodbye to the sun, right? The mom's giving the thumbs up and the sun's waving and getting out of the car for the last hug, big kiss before they move in for the first day. And as they got in, they got their supplies. It just was so neat to watch that excitement. But so students and staff have just been wonderful with our instructional models. Here's some, first from the secondary level. So you can see in the upper right-hand corner, we have a full return at middle school in terms of what that looks like in a middle school classroom. On the left-hand side, both of those are from a hybrid at the high school. And so just give you a sense for what that can look like. And on the right-hand side, that is actually also a hybrid, but it was hybrid in one row, one row depth. So you can see that they're actually worse, you can't tell that there were students in that room. And then that teacher has a good handful of students that are remoting to that class at the same time. And so it's a neat example and celebration of the different models that we have. Here's a look at some of our elementary classrooms, right? In terms of, the one on the left is a full return. And so that is a full classroom of students. The one on the right, you can't see them all, that's a hybrid classroom. And so there are a few, fewer in that picture as they have on the hybrid. And I'm sure there's a little that will be here. I'm still be sure there's a little room in school every day, even though we're three weeks in. I just thought that was adorable in terms of that picture. A huge thank you to the weather, right? It has again been a wonderful September. And so all of, whether it be elementary or secondary, our teachers and students are finding creative ways to use outside. And so obviously, that is a good, healthy choice. And they've been able to, well, that side is at a middle school. And the right-hand side is at an elementary school. And the students have their little desk set up and took their work out there and a little supply. And they were able to do their lesson out there in that piece. And all of our schools have outside spaces, and they have been used really, really well. And so I just want to thank everybody for their creativity for that. I just want to give you a sense, we're just because students are full remote, doesn't mean they can't share with their class. So this was International Dot Day. I think it was this Tuesday was International Dot Day, which is a book, the dot, which is a wonderful book. And these students had heard of the dot and then did an activity and were able to share with their classmates why they made the dots they made. And so they did something about making their mark and sort of setting goals for the year and using dots to show goals. And so then they would share, I believe Julia D., who's in the bottom right-hand corner, was actually in the process of speaking as this picture was taken, and sharing about her picture with her classmates. And so it's just neat to see that our full remote still has that classroom feel, even though they're not physically together in the space. As I mentioned earlier, I'm just also really excited for the launch of the website on Friday. So I hope you find a chance to interact with that, www.penbridge.org. Both sites are still live, because we know people sometimes can easily find information what they're used to. So we are going to put a new platform for a little while, but we're not going to update information on the old site. So any new information will only go on the new site, but current information will maintain on the old site. Just to make them feel like where it was on my other site. So they can go there and get it there. A huge thank you to Kelly Cooper and Diane Miller and the web masters and the site. Kelly, you're the one who's telling. This was amazing. I've worked for a long period of time. And so as we move the content over, we're going to find out what you need to celebrate this. I have asked Kelly to come over to the activities committee and do a full report. I can show you some of the features there. So you can get them. Two of the features that I want to brag about, one's the picture, one's the calendar that we talked about. The calendar ingrained into your very own phone, as well as between school and district, is a really, really nice feature. This is the full calendar view. If you close this, it just shows you a three- to five-day look ahead, depending on how many events there are, and what schools you call up onto your calendar. But this is a sense, this is where all of the school board meetings, all the committee meetings, all the building activities will be held from that standpoint. The other piece will be the mobile app. We learned as we were talking about this, that the mobile app, now that we've launched, Blackboard is building our mobile app. And over the next month, there will be a release on how to get all of the information you want sent directly to your phone, both from your schools, so you can just pick which schools you want for your children to attend, as well as the district force that are engaged to you from that standpoint. But we know that mobiles being friendly is important these days. And so all of this will be available right through the app. And again, that increase will be going up. Right, and that is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. I'd like to also echo the thanks to everybody that moved this happening. It took a complete team effort to open the schools, to clean the schools, to set up, to get the classrooms ready, to have the technology ready. So it's a complete team effort. And I really appreciate all, everybody that had something to do with it, whether that's the transportation department, the administration, pupil services, everybody had a hand in this. So thank you all very much. Technology, I don't want to forget you, Dave. Kelly, thank you back there. It's awesome to see everything working. So thank you. And I can see the kids really appreciate it. Thank you all for that. So we'll move into the report from the student liaison.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So obviously, here at Penridge, a lot of the events that we normally do year to year have taken a total big block. But thankfully, to our members working with administrations, we found some exciting new ways to do it. So right before school started, we had a chalk day where members came and decorated the sidewalk around the building. And then moving forward, we're having a voter registration drive this upcoming week, where we hope to have the best turnout in the county and be competitive across the Commonwealth. We're also having our pink-out t-shirt sales. Even though we can't go to the game this year, we still hope to fundraise with those t-shirts. And that was sent out to the grade-level campuses. And hopefully, we'll get that out on district social media soon. And as of now, that's all we have. Every day, we're trying to find new stuff. So if anyone has any suggestions, we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into the consent calendar. So I would like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through H. Second in behind, Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? Okay. So we'll revert to the normal voting process tonight. I think we're pretty much back in person. So we, a, nay, or abstain. So, so, all approving?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes nine-zero. Moving into the committee, committee reports, activities. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. We have one AM work schedule tonight. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended athletic activity for the health and safety plan.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members?
Three, all one.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes nine-zero.
Mr. Kraus, I just want, for the public, for the public's sake, I just wanted to mention that that amendment has been dealing with spectators at fall sports. And so when we first did our health and safety plan, the state's recommendation was to not have spectators at any fall sports. That recommendation has changed. And so we, at this point, are honoring the outdoor requirement 250 as well as the indoor requirement 25. So we are able to be able to host spectators, parent spectators, at all of our fall sports. And all of those specifics were sent to the athletes' headquarters. And so we were fortunate enough to be able to have some spectators today at field hockey, as well as even at volleyball. And so the parents were very, very appreciative that they were able to watch, as well as the live stream.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification. Back to you, Mrs. Walters.
Our next activities meeting is on Monday afternoon.
Thank you. Curriculum committee, Mrs. Cullen.
The curriculum meeting is on September 8th. And we have a couple of motions. The first one is a motion to approve the textbook bundle for AP, GWS, Government, and Politics that includes both physical textbooks and electronic.
Seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. Mrs. Cullen, back to you.
My next question is to approve the textbook bundle for the Fall Sports.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. He didn't make any comment around that, or is that, okay, we're good? All right. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes nine-zero.
Mr. Kraus, before we move on to the next committee, I just want to, for the sake of people at home, we've been, reported to have been some audio issues in terms of feedback. And so we have disabled the vending machines, which are behind the microphone, we think are causing that.
Projecting.
And so we're going to make sure, we've also deactivated the live microphones. And so we're just going to ask the board members who are making committee reports, so please make sure you project towards the camera. Okay? And so hopefully, that will improve the situation. And we'll make sure that we have those vending machines unplugged before our next meeting.
Okay, things we learned.
We learned.
Okay. All right. It's back to you, Mrs. Cullen.
Our next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for Monday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. Facilities committee. There are several motions tonight for the facilities committee. First is a motion to approve the multimodal resolution for Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the multimodal resolution for Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. So for, again, for the public, these are grant applications for the district to help us with some of our activities that we're doing. So that's, motions on the table?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes nine-zero. The next motion is a motion to approve the Reynolds Civil Engineering Services Agreement for the high school, middle school complex, and West Rock Hill Elementary School.
Seven.
Seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes nine-zero.
And again, Mr. Kraus, I think just for clarity's sake,
Yep.
that information is to take a look at a high school and north middle school complex, to take a look at traffic patterns as well as parking opportunities. And then at West Rock Hill, the same thing. To be taking a look at both the parent drop-off and pickup, as well as the bus loading and unloading zones. I'm going to make some approvals of those.
Thank you. All right. Our next motion is a motion to approve renewal of the Lerna for the Sellersville Business Campus. And I just, seconded by Mr. Cormac, it sounded like. I'm just going to provide a little context around this. So this is a, extends the, a tux relief to the Sellersville Business Campus in an effort to attract businesses to that campus. This was in place for five years. This is a renewal of the agreement for the next five years. Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or concerns from board members? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? No, motion passes nine-zero. Next item is a motion to accept and award school listed number 21-114, the Woffington Body Company, in the amount of $109,066.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. Okay, last item I have is a motion to approve obsolete items listed A and B. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes nine-zero. The next facilities committee meeting is Tuesday, October 13th. And next committee is finance, Mrs. Baynes-Fulman.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The first motion is to approve PNC as a bond underwriter to refinance district bonds.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. Mrs. Baynes-Fulman.
The next motion is to approve Ginsmore and Stoll as bond counsel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. Mrs. Baynes-Fulman.
Okay, next I'll make a motion to approve contracts A through F. And just to clarify for those at home, if you're logged into Board Docs, you can actually see and click on that information. So it's, you can read all of the detail, and I won't read it for you. You know, we spend all of this time reading it for you, but that is where you can locate it if you want to actually see what those are. I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine-zero. Mrs. Baynes-Fulman.
Make a motion to approve student activity account at high school, build-on request to establish. I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members?
Just for the benefit of the public, this is a new student club at high school level focused on third-world housing and infrastructure. And so this is just neat, that these are students who have had passion in this area, found a staff member who would help support it, and so there's just a new opportunity for students to gain by.
Just one question. Is this only out of the country, or would they be doing work in the country? In the United States?
I don't know the answer to that question, and we'll have to get that information for you. you.
Yeah, because I know up at the tech school back in the day, they had a group of kids from like the carpentry and construction classes. And I hope I'm talking loud about it. Okay. That would go down, and they went down with the tree and they helped rebuild homes for a couple of weeks. I didn't know that would be somewhat of what they would be doing, like going down here and just had a couple of Americans go down and help rebuild in our own country as well. I just knew that it was something. And I don't know if we could talk to our carpentry and construction teachers and possibly have something to do with going over there, just as far.
We'll find out.
Thank you.
I have a second to that. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes nine zero. Mrs. Vanez-Fonnes.
The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 13th.
IU committee, Mrs. Vanez-Fonnes.
Thank you. The IU board meeting, the IU board met on September 15th, and we are scheduled to meet again on Tuesday, October 20th. At our last meeting, we talked about how the IU was supporting districts and blending in distance learning as well as discussing the differences and accommodating all models across districts with various plans, which is, you know, very complicated to be dealing with all different scenarios across as well as even outside of the districts and other facilities. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit welcomed 49 new staff members with induction week. The supervisors and warehouse teams are getting staff PPE and sanitization go kits, gown and glove kits, and student PPE kits out to everyone. The Upper County Early Learning Center, most of you sure remember how the building in Quakertown burnt down, and they found what would have been a temporary home in Hilltown at a church. And before ever actually getting into that home because of the COVID and everything that happened with school, they've now found a permanent, what they expect to be a permanent home. They are leasing an old daycare, an old preschool facility, so it's actually perfect. It's a newer building. It's set up for all of their needs. So it needs very minimal converting, but the lease starting on July 31st, and it is in the Hilltown Plaza Shop and Center in Hilltown. So over by the Home Depot there. So that's where the new home will be for the Upper County Technical Center. And that's all I've got. That's all I have.
The next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting is Tuesday, October 20th. I did it in reverse.
Thank you very much. Personnel committee, Dr. Thompson.
Hi, Mr. Kraus. So we have a few motions tonight. First, it is a pleasure to make a motion to approve the following tenure recommendations. Kelsey Goodenow, Patrin Fowler, Nicholas Phil, Laura Phillips, Andrea Lava, Adam Raebach, Megan Lutz, Erin Bruckstensky, Megan McGovern, Christine Robinson, Devon Meneely, Jennifer Ruggerio, Cody Muller, Joanne Shepherd, Kristi Nappi, Nathan Shore, Joshua Neville, Elizabeth Comiselli, Randy O'Neil, and Sean O'Neil.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? I'd just like to make one. That's an awesome, that's an awesome list of tenured professionals that we're adding to. Other questions or comments from board members? All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Ms., Dr. Thompson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 custodial maintenance stipends.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ESS substitute teacher addendum.
Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Dr. Thompson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve settlement agreement for employee number 9697.
I'll second that. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Dr. Thompson.
Last I'd like to make a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between Penn School District and Penridge Education Association.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The next personnel committee meeting is scheduled on Monday, October 15th.
Okay, Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mrs. Dolan.
Sure, thank you. Upper County Technical School met on Thursday. I don't remember the date of that, but it was last Thursday. We met in person, which was great. Everyone was happy to be together again, I think. I don't have much. Mr. Sweet says that the students are back. They're there five days a week. Everybody seems to be happy, invited by the mask order. Also, that evening, we recognized Dr. or Mr. McCarthy. He's our auto collision teacher. He's been there several years. He's really well-known, really well-liked. I know, I've known him for years. He's a really good guy, and unfortunately, he will be retiring in January. It was really nice to have him there. And we actually just got a book, something about Upper Bucks County, and it was published in a book, which was great. But so we got to honor him that last night, or Thursday night, and that was great. Our student of the month for September was Raymond Slyfer. He was a, he is a Quakertown student, and he is in Dean Rooks, Mr. Rooks' machining class. He zoomed in, and he said hi and told us a little about what he likes to do and about his machining class. Before our meeting, we got to go up and tour the remodel going on at the animal tech and biosciences building. I did not make that, but if Mr. Rice or Mrs. Vanez-Fonnes have anything to say about that for the weekend.
I think it looks great. I mean, all the renovations at the dawn, it's all directed to visibility. So everybody, teachers and students can see each other, and they're all separate, and they have their own space. So I think it's great.
We were able to zoom in, and Dennis, who is our technology guy up there, he did a great job. We were able to be on. I think when I looked in the corner, we had 48 people viewing our meeting, which is way more than usual. Other than that, we had, we approved some monetary amounts for baking and animal veterinary science, their fees. Right now, we're not open to the poetry to come into like the Rise Bake 3 or our cafe. But I had Jeff said that hopefully in the future, we might be able to do like a car pickup if you wanted to get something, because we're not a lot of happy people in the school right now that are, yes. Other than that, unless you guys have something else to add. But everything's going really well up there. Everybody seems to be happy. They're happy to be back, they're happy to be head off. So I appreciate it.
Wonderful, because of their enrollment. Their enrollment was over 800 this year, which is the first time at least in the near past that that's been true. And again, we are going to be neck and neck with Quakertown. So we're waiting for the official enrollment before, but we're hoping to be got, but we'll see. It'll be close.
But I have to, I did want to say thank you to our Director of Transportation, Mrs. Kraus. She has done a phenomenal job. That was way more puzzle pieces than we ever had before with any um drop off, a PM drop off, a midday run. So I just wanted to say thank you to her and everybody else, everybody in transportation, and everybody here that made it possible for our tech students to get up there and schedule them. So thank you. I know those kids really appreciate it. And a lunch day, and a double chemistry day. All the different stuff. And the virtual kids. Oh, I know. But everything in Texas was good.
Your next meeting.
Thursday. Or Thursday. Or Thursday, October.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan.
You sound like you need an interactive calendar. You show me these. I don't even know what to do.
Penridge Area Coordinating Committee, Mr. Cormac.
Could I give a quick up? I have a report that seems to be repeating itself, but our chairman, David Nyman, is going to undergo a September meeting, and he's planning on an October 29th meeting. So that'll be our next scheduled meeting for the Penridge Area Coordinating Committee. Sir, for sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cormac. Penridge Community Educational Foundation, Mrs. Walters.
Okay, the TDS met on Saturday, September 5th. It's due, and they discussed the lovely evening, which is the biggest fundraiser that they have that was canceled unfortunately this past year because of COVID. But they got a date for April 27th, which is a Tuesday. Mark our calendars now. Hopefully, going in the right direction here and can all get together, celebrate that through the wonderful mark. And our, oh, our next meeting is, as I pick on this, Dolan, right? And I'm not there. October 3rd, that'd be October 3rd.
Thank you, Mrs. Walters. All right, that moves us into old business. Is there any old business that we need to address? No? None? Is there any new business?
I should correct the record. It's actually the fourth meeting. The fourth Thursday, I don't know which one's right, the 22nd?
22nd's on here.
But the third Thursday would be the 15th, so it's actually the fourth Thursday.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that correction. All right. So I'll move into announcements. An executive session was held on September.
Did we get public comment?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Is there any public comment, Dr. Ball?
Yeah, there have been three public comments that have been submitted since 6:00 PM. The first one is from Mindy McCluskey, who is from Hilltown. And she asked, is it true that if there is a positive COVID case in our district, that we will not be notified unless the Board of Health contacts any people that were around with positive testing first? I'm just going to answer it because she just asked. That is not true. So the two levels of communication happen, that the people who are in direct contact, which is what you refer to, are contacted first. They are contacted both by the school district and the Bucks County Department of Health, and then the entire school is contacted. So it's not unless they contact those people, it is in addition to contacting people who have been in direct contact with the situation, because that's when quarantine comes into play. The rest of the school is contacted to inform them that there was no quarantine that comes into play, if they were not in direct contact with the individual tested positive. The next public comment is from Chuck Clifton of Sellersville. It says, a key district goal for this year is to continue education and training for all stakeholders in the areas of diversity, equity, inclusion. I hope this training will also be required or suggested for school board members as well. I think the Penridge community as a whole should be informed as to whether all board members will also participate and thoughtfully engage with these issues in a meaningful, ongoing way. All of our professional developments, there's not just one, obviously, in this area or any of our areas, so there are multiple professional developments. The board is often aware of those because of our committee meetings and discussions at that. There are some that do involve the board, and there are ratings for the board, and there are others that are specific to staff. And the last public comment that was submitted was from John Wilson of Bedminster. Does the district intend to engage a professional independent advisor to assist in the evaluation of refinancing options? Mr. Wilson, there were multiple professionals who were brought in. There were multiple presentations by financial advisors and bond underwriting and bond couples that were considered over multiple meetings over about a 16-month period. We were talking about this for a long time. So there were lots of professionals who were brought in to assist in that evaluation, as well as obviously Mr. Dolan and his department. That is the public comment for tonight.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the public comments. Now I'll move into announcements. My apologies. An executive session was held on September 14th to discuss personnel and legal matters. And an executive session will be held tonight following this meeting for the purpose of personnel and legal matters. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 26th. Thank you very much, and I'll make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Rice. All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.